Tonight, but it's for good reason. We're going to start off with our NIGID meeting first because it's late at night. So it's in our regular meeting. Our city council has had to wait for two hours for us to finish up our second meeting. So we're going to get this out of the way and do those regular things. If you are pleased, call D.C. Order to the NIGID.
Yes, Chairman Ford, Vice Chairman Bullock.
Here.
Board Member Amador.
Present.
Board Member Teeter.
Here.
Board Member Carson.
Present.
Board Member Benson.
Here.
And you don't need to press any lights. They should all be taken care of. Board Member McAdonnie.
Here.
Board Member Elliott.
Present.
And Board Member Douglas.
Present.
Mr. Vice Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you.
There is one item on the consent agenda this evening. Does anyone on the council wish to pull this ordinance from the consent agenda for further discussion and vote? Okay. If not, I ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda of the NIGID. Mr. McAdonnie?
I would move to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Benson?
Second the motion.
I have a motion in a second. Would the board attorney please read the title?
Title reads, "An Ordinance Including Certain Lands Into the City of Commerce City Northern Infrastructure General Improvement District."
Okay, we've had a motion and the title's been read. Would you please, we'll take a roll call vote. Results of the vote are eight yes, noes, nos, and we have one person that's going to be excused as soon as we take the vote after this vote. Okay, because we have to excuse the chairman. So that passes by consent. The only other business we have tonight is can I get a motion to excuse the chairman? Mr. Amador.
Move to excuse Chairman Ford.
Mr. Benson?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second to excuse Chairman Ford. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, he is excused for this meeting. That's the business that we have for the NIGID. The meeting is adjourned.
Can I just give you one minute?
Okay, one minute. Okay, time starts now. I'll call to order the meeting of the April 6th meeting of City Council for Commerce City. Would clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Ford. Mayor Pro Tem Bullock.
Here.
Councilman Douglas.
Present.
Councilwoman Elliott.
Present.
Councilman McAdonnie.
Present.
Councilman Benson.
Here.
Councilwoman Carson.
Present.
Councilman Teeter.
Here.
Councilman Amador.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Bullock, you have a quorum.
Thank you.
Would the audience please join me in standing for a pledge of allegiance and a minute of silence and a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Would the staff please pass the microphone for audience introduction?
Tom Rapp from Senior Hub.
Jean Rapp.
Karen O'Donnell, Parks and Recreation.
Jacob Cox, Parks and Recreation.
Lisa Nordholt, Parks and Recreation.
Danny Thomas.
Betty Thomas.
Sheri Ella Brock, RTD.
Kathy Blightman, Human Resources.
Troy Smith, Police Department.
Lowell Richardson, Police Department.
Roger Tenchberg, City Manager's Office.
Maria DeAndre, Public Works.
Senior Emmett Evan Joyce, United States Air Force Reserve.
Cindy Dewey, Headquarters Air Reserve Personnel Center, Buckley Air Force Base.
Carlotta Barnes, Quality Community Foundation Board.
Valerie Medina, Quality Community Foundation.
Doug Heinman, IT.
Vanessa Dema, Ralston House.
Anne Demers, Ralston House.
Tonya Eisenbar, Brighton and Commerce City Police Department Victim Services.
Okay, thank you for everyone attending this night, this meeting this evening. Next on the agenda, there are eight proclamations and recognition listed on tonight's agenda. If you're here to be recognized or to accept a proclamation on behalf of your organization, please come forward and sit in the front row. Okay, now everybody sit in the back row. We're going to do this a little different tonight. Each of the proclamations have been handed out to a specific councilperson which will read that specific proclamation. The city attorney will read the Adams County Youth and Mayor and Commissioners Youth Awards. Mr. City Attorney, would you proceed with that award?
Final of this item on the agenda is recognition of Commerce City's nominees for Adams County Mayor's and Commissioners Youth Awards.
There's a presentation that goes with this, so if you would like to do the presentation.
All right, so this year we had two nominees for the Adams County Mayor's and Commissioners Youth Awards. Our first nominee is Michaela Belame. Michaela is an eighteen-year-old senior at Adams City High School. Michaela is second in line for valedictorian and a candidate to attend Yale University in the fall. These successes, however, did not come easily for Michaela. Throughout her young life, Michaela has moved households many times and has been faced with challenges that would have made it easy and understandable for her to give up, but she did not do that. Instead of giving up, Michaela did the opposite, realizing that the only way to better her life was to make the most of her education and attend college. With that being said, Michaela buried her head in books and sought out school counselors and teachers at every opportunity to talk with them about her future. She is truly taking her future into her own hands and not letting anything stand in the way. On top of her schoolwork, Michaela has volunteered over three hundred and eighty hours at the Senior Center through Volunteers of America, as well as Adams 14 and Clear Creek School Districts. When asked why she volunteers, she simply stated, "Because she cares about people." It is our honor and privilege to present Michaela Belame with the Adams County Mayor's and Commissioners Youth Award. In addition, Michaela was selected to be recognized at the county level on April thirtieth. There were fifty-nine nominees this year in Adams County with just twenty-three advancing to the county level. Congratulations to Michaela for your outstanding accomplishments. Our second nominee is Sophia Sunday. Sophia is a seventh grader at Landmark Academy. Challenges are nothing new to Sophia. She has been faced with health challenges as well as academic struggles over the years, but you wouldn't know it if you spent time with Sophia. Her positive attitude and smile brighten whatever room she is in. She inspires others to be better versions of themselves by constantly putting forth her best effort and being true to herself. Despite encountering many obstacles that others don't have to face, Sophia participates in extracurricular activities and sports. Both teachers and peers alike derive motivation and inspiration from this amazing girl. We are proud to present the Adams County Mayor's and Commissioners Youth Award to Sophia The picture shown right now is a picture of the two nominees at our local banquet out at Buffalo Run with City Council. Thank you, City Council, for attending the banquet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Does anyone from City Council have any comments they want to make on this Mayor and Youth Awards, Mayor and Commissioners Youth Awards? No. I do not see either one of the nominees here either because I do recognize them. Plus, I see that picture right here. So we will get their awards to them, and on April thirtieth, there'll be members of council that will be able to attend the Adams County Mayor and Commissioners Youth Awards that we will be recognizing the people from Commerce City that made it to the next level. But again, I'd like to thank them and another applause for them, please. Next, we will have different councilpeople read their proclamation. At the end of all the proclamations, we will come down, distribute the proclamations, and take pictures with the people whose proclamations that they are. Our first readers for the Child Abuse Prevention Month proclamation is Ms. Crystal Elliott.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. City of Commerce City, Colorado proclamation, "Whereas while every child deserves to grow up in a caring environment, free from harm and fear, one in seven girls and one in twenty-five boys will be sexually abused before their eighteenth birthday. And whereas Commerce City has dedicated individuals and organizations who work daily to counter the problem of child abuse and to help parents obtain the assistance they need, and whereas our community is stronger when all citizens become aware of child abuse prevention and become involved in supporting parents to raise their children in a safe and nurturing environment. And whereas effective child abuse prevention programs such as Ralston House succeed because of partnership among families, social service agencies, schools, religious and civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. And whereas all citizens, community agencies, faith organizations, and businesses will work to increase their efforts to support families. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Commerce City hereby proclaims the month of April twenty fifteen as Child Abuse Prevention Month and encourages the community to join in renewing our commitment to preventing child abuse and learning how we can promote the safety and well-being of children in our lives. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause this seal to be affixed on the sixth day of April twenty fifteen. City of Commerce City, Colorado, signed by Sean Ford, Mayor."
Thank you. Do I have a motion to accept this proclamation? Ms. Elliott?
Move to approve.
Mr. McAdonnie?
Second.
I have a motion in a second to approve this proclamation. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Okay, thank you. That is approved unanimously. Our next proclamation for Victims' Rights Week will be read by Ms. J.D. Carson.
City of Commerce City, Colorado, "Whereas Americans are victims of more than twenty-six million crimes each year, affecting family members, friends, neighbors, and coworkers, leaving a lasting physical and emotional or financial impact on people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds. And whereas, in addition to these challenges, crime victims face criminal, military, and juvenile justice systems that at times ignore their rights and treat them with disrespect. And whereas, the victim assistance community faces new challenges to reach and serve all victims, including those affected by domestic minor sex trafficking and cybercrime, as well as immigrant, urban youth, and LGBT victims. And whereas, now is the time to embrace a new emphasis on learning what works in reaching underserved victims and meeting victims' needs, such as working collaboratively with other agencies. And whereas, the Commerce City Police Department and its Victim Services Unit is participating in National Crime Victims' Rights Week to help raise awareness of victims' rights. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council hereby proclaims the week of April nineteenth to the twenty-fifth, twenty fifteen, as National Crime Victims' Rights Week, reaffirming the city's commitment to serve victims of crime with dignity and respect. Signed by Mayor Sean Ford."
Thank you. Can I get a motion to accept this proclamation, Ms. Carson?
Move to approve proclamation fifteen dash oh eight.
Mr. Amador?
Second.
I have a motion in a second to approve the proclamation. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? It is unanimously passed. Our next proclamation for Sexual Assault Awareness Month will be read by Mr. Jason McAdonnie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Whereas every day, women, men, and children across Colorado suffer the pain and trauma of sexual assault upon survivors in our Colorado communities. And whereas this crime occurs far too frequently, goes unreported far too often, and leaves long-lasting physical and emotional scars. And whereas during National Sex Assault Awareness Month, we recommit ourselves not only to lifting the veil of secrecy and shame surrounding sexual violence, but also to raising awareness, expanding support for victims, and strengthening our response. And whereas we must work to provide necessary resources to victims of every circumstance, including medical attention, mental health services, relocation and housing assistance, and advocacy during the criminal justice process. And whereas the City of Commerce City shares the responsibility for protecting our community and employees from sexual assault, supporting victims when it does occur, and bringing perpetrators to justice. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council hereby proclaims the month of April twenty fifteen as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, encouraging our community to increase awareness about sexual violence, decrease its frequency, hold offenders accountable, support victims, and heal lives. In witness thereof, I have hereto set my hand and cause this seal to be affixed on this sixth day of April twenty fifteen. City of Commerce City, signed, Mayor Sean Ford."
Hey, thank you, Mr. McAdonnie. Can I ask for a motion to accept this proclamation, Mr. McAdonnie?
Would move to approve proclamation fifteen nine oh nine.
Mr. Teeter?
Second.
I have a motion in a second to approve this proclamation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? The proclamation is unanimously approved. Okay, our next proclamation will be read by Mr. Jim Benson, the Stand Up for Transportation Day proclamation.
Thank you. Whereas transportation is the economic backbone of our nation's economy, federal funding for public transportation infrastructure needs to increase, and Congress needs to pass a long-term multimodal transportation bill by May thirty-first, twenty fifteen. And whereas public transportation is a proven catalyst for economic growth, since for every one dollar invested in public transportation, four dollars in economic returns is generated locally, creating economically vibrant and prosperous communities. And whereas public transportation offers millions of Americans access to economic opportunities, since nearly sixty percent of the trips taken on public transportation are for work commutes. And whereas Stand Up for Transportation Day will be celebrated in small, medium, and large communities across the United States on April ninth, twenty fifteen, as a day that highlights the critical need for funding of all kinds of transportation infrastructure. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of Commerce City declares that quality transportation services of all modes is essential for the economic prosperity of our county, our communities, and hereby proclaims April ninth, twenty fifteen, as Stand Up for Transportation Day to encourage greater federal investment in public transportation infrastructure. Signed by Mayor Sean Ford, and I would move for the adoption of this proclamation.
Okay, we have a motion to adopt this proclamation. Ms. Carson? We have a motion in a second to adopt this proclamation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? The proclamation is unanimous accepted. Our next proclamation, Air Force Reserve Day, will be read by Mr. Rick Teeter.
Whereas the Air Force Reserve was created as a separate component on April fourteenth, nineteen forty-eight, when the Army Air Corps Reserve transferred to the Air Force. And whereas the Air Force Reserve, in a combat-ready force composed of more than sixty-seven thousand civilian airmen-
airmen, many of whom are Commerce City residents stationed locally at over 60 locations throughout the United States. And whereas, in a combat and national security, the Air Force Reserve strategically leaned forward to provide cost-efficient capabilities to the Air Force. And whereas, the Air Force Reserve serves globally for every combat and command in the Air Force and cyberspace. And whereas, in the past 67 years, reserves have joined forces to support and defend our country. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city hereby proclaims April 14th, 2015, as Air Force Reserve Day, thanking those who serve our country. Signed, Mayor Sean Ford.
Thank you. Can I ask for a motion to accept this proclamation, Mr. Teeter?
So moved.
Mr. Amador?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept this proclamation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? It's unanimously accepted. Our next proclamation will be National Service Recognition Day. It will be read by Mr. Andrew Amador.
Proclamation 15-13, National Service Recognition Day proclamation. City of Commerce City, Colorado proclamation, whereas service to others is a hallmark of the American character and central to how we meet our challenges. And whereas, national service expands economic opportunity by creating more sustainable, resilient communities and providing education, career skills, and leadership ability for those who serve. And whereas, Senior Corporation for National and Community Service and the Adams and East Arapahoe Retired and Senior RSVP Volunteer Program, sponsored locally by the Senior Hub Incorporated, demonstrate commitment, dedication, and patriotism by making an intensive commitment to service. And whereas, during 2014, 674 Adams and East Arapahoe RSVP volunteers donated 118,944 hours of volunteer service in more than 60 locations, with 30 Commerce City RSVP members donating 7,100 hours of total. And whereas, Corporation for National and Community Service shares a priority with mayors nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, and strengthen communities, joining with the National League of Cities and mayors across the country to recognize the impact of service on the Mayor's Day and recognition for national service on April 7th, 2015. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City of Commerce City Council hereby proclaims April 7th, 2015, as National Service Recognition Day, recognizing the positive impacts of volunteering in our community and thank those who serve. In witness of Mayor Sean Ford, City of Commerce City Mayor.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve this proclamation, Ms. Amador?
Move to approve proclamation.
Okay, a second, Ms. Elliott?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Okay, it's passed unanimously. Our last proclamation, Arbor Day proclamation, and Tree City USA recognition will be read by Mr. Steve Douglas.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Whereas the City of Commerce City desires to recognize and observe Arbor Day along with other, with others across the nation, throughout the world. And whereas the City of Commerce City has been recognized as Tree City USA by National Arbor Day Foundation for the 24th consecutive year. Whereas the Commerce City and staff wish to promote and invest in the planting of trees in the residential areas, as well as city-owned parks, trails, and open space. And whereas the trees in our city increase property value, enhance the economic vitality of our business areas, and beautify our community. Now therefore, be it resolved that City of Commerce City declare April 17th, 2015, as Arbor Day, recognized with cities as, uh, recognized with activities such as providing tree seedlings and tree care information to the community. And before resolved that the council urges all residents to support efforts to care for our trees, will lend some support in the city community forestry program. And whereas, whereof I have hereunto set my hand and seal, I'm sorry, my hand has caused this seal to be affixed on the sixth day of April 2015. Sean Ford, Mayor.
Thank you. Can I ask for a motion to approve this proclamation, Mr. Douglas?
So moved.
Mr. Benson? Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the proclamation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? It is passed unanimously. We will now come down and distribute the proclamations and take pictures with everyone that is here to get their proclamation.
Okay. The first one we're going to start with is Andy Maris with Ralston House Police Chief,
Okay, next on the agenda is citizens' communication. When you come up for citizens' communication, please give your name and address and for the record, and you'll be limited to three minutes for your comments. We have one name on the list tonight for citizens' communication, but she signed in on the number two, so we have to wait for number one to finish first. Okay, now Valerie Medina, would you please step forward? Thank you.
Good evening, city council. Thank you for having me. I'm Valerie Medina, resident 6721 Locust Street, Commerce City, Colorado, 80022.
Carlotta Barnes, 15800 East 121st Avenue, Unit Chief 3. The purpose why I'm here today is speaking on behalf of the Quality Community Foundation. We are currently in the process of planning a golf tournament, which will be on May 29th, raising funds for Commerce City scholarships for individuals who are interested in post-secondary education. If you're not aware, I am a 2009 scholarship recipient, and I was able to utilize the $4,000 to pursue my degree in nonprofit studies, human services. Since then, I've been actively involved in the community, engaged in many nonprofits locally in the city and also Adams County. When I graduated school, I decided I wanted to give back to not only Commerce City, but to the Quality Community Foundation as well. So I applied for a board position. Since I've been with the board, I have now been promoted to president of the QCF. I'm very honored and very pleased with the mission and vision of not only the QCF, but Commerce City as well. Tonight, we're asking for your support to help us promote and participate in the golf tournament. These funds that will be, that will be, um, that will be collected from the fundraiser of the golf tournament will be used for future scholarship recipients. The fundraiser for the golf tournament is the only revenue that we do have coming into the QCF for these scholarships. And I'm hoping that with your support and with the networking system that you have, that you would be able to support us and promote and encourage people to participate in this event. We do have some flyers and brochures that we'd like to pass out. We can also email. You can visit our Facebook page and get that information. Here in front of you, you'll see a board of past scholarship recipients. Currently, we are in the process of accepting applications from Commerce City residents who are interested in post-secondary education. The due date for that is April 22nd. So if you know of somebody who may qualify, please send the word out. Again, that due date is the 22nd, and
Thank you.
This is an opportunity to ask questions if you have any.
Do I have any questions from the council, except what's the date of the golf tournament?
That'll be, it'll be the Friday after Memorial Day weekend.
May 29th.
May 29th is the golf turn, or there's a date. Thank you.
Buffalo Run Golf Course starts at 7:00. We do have a hole-in-one prize, which is a Harley.
Three.
Three Harleys, yes. One is a Harley, one is a Mustang, one is a truck.
A Harley truck.
Okay, any other questions, Ms. Carson?
Um, just for those watching, if they have any other questions or want more information, is this online?
Yes, it is.
And is that on the city's website? Is that where?
It's on the city website slash QCF.
Okay, and are there somewhere they can pick flyers up throughout the city, at the rec center or anything?
I know LeAnn has some in her office. We have them available online and also via email. Do we have any set at the rec?
She's put it left in here at the rec center, but
All right, the golf course.
Yes, the golf course has
The golf course has the information. All right.
We have to put them in different places and mailed them to many of the businesses in the community.
Oh, good.
So they are aware of this opportunity for them.
Well, hopefully you get a great response.
Yes.
Valerie Carlotta, thanks for all your hard work in making sure that this is a successful program.
Okay, if I can just say one more thing, I know there's a lot of people that may not be interested in golfing. We are acceptable to donations and sponsors as well, so if you spread the word, we would really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Douglas?
Yes, thank you ladies for giving us an update. Now, this is for post-secondary school. What is, what if you have students that are in junior college but want to pursue a, to go forward to a major university? Would this scholarship help them out, or is this for kids that are in high school?
I believe that it would still help them out.
Okay, and is
Traditional students.
Okay, and adults as well, inner city?
Yes.
Okay. All right, appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Peter.
Mr. Teeter?
Yes, I would like to personally thank the committee for, that it is involved in this golf tournament. It is a, uh, these people are all volunteers, doing this on their own time, and this is to raise money for our, uh, our kids in School District 14 and 27J.
Okay.
Thank you, Peter.
Okay, thank you so much. Next on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the meeting of February 2nd, 2015. Mr. McAdonie?
Am I correct that we need you, uh, excuse the mayor? I guess he's not here tonight to have to excuse from voting.
No, uh, when we do these minutes, we'll excuse him.
No, you don't, you don't need to do
Because he's not here to vote.
You don't need to have him abstain from tonight's meeting because he's not here to abstain from
Yeah, I caught myself as I said it, yep. So I would move to approve the meeting minutes for February 2nd, 2015.
Okay, Mr. Teeter?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, approve the minutes for February 2nd, 2015. All those in favor? Okay, I have, Ms. Carson?
Um, I think we have two council members.
Uh, I think they showed up later. Okay. Okay. Any other questions, a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Okay, that approves, is approved unanimously. The next on the agenda is the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes items that are routine, procedural, informational, self-explanatory, and non-controversial. They are presented to the council for a single motion and vote. Any member of the council may ask to remove a specific item for Any member of the council may ask to remove a specific item for further discussion and a separate vote. Tonight, there are eight items listed under the consent agenda. Does anyone on council wish to remove any of these items? If not, I will proceed with the consent agenda, move, a motion to proceed the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor Protam, let me, before you vote on that, there is a typographical error. We don't have to remove the items from the consent agenda, but I need to tell you what the typographical error is so that when you vote, you'll know what I'm correcting. It has to do with ordinance Z nine one five dash one five, which is the second-to-last ordinance, and Z nine one eight dash one five, which is the last ordinance on the consent agenda. Section three of, of ordinance Z nine one five dash one five presently has conditions attached to it. Those conditions need to be inserted in section three of ordinance Z nine one eight dash one five. In other words, the conditions are just reversed between those two ordinances. So we can correct that as an administrative correction, but to have you vote on it, I want you to be able to vote on it as corrected. And the correction would be then, is we're taking the conditions out of nine one eight dash one five and inserting them in nine one eight.
You're taking them out of nine one five dash one five and inserting them in nine one eight. Okay, is that clear on everybody on the council? Does anybody have any questions about that? Okay. I will need a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented. Mr. McAdonie?
Would move to, move to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Benson?
Second, the motion.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Mr. Attorney, would you please read the titles?
Yes, title of resolution two zero one five dash one eight, resolution approving the grant of right-of-way for the North Metro Commuter Rail Project. Title of resolution two zero one five dash two seven, resolution approving intergovernmental agreement between the City of Brighton and the City of Commerce City establishing a shared special weapons and tactics team. Title of ordinance two zero zero four, an ordinance amending the two thousand fifteen ordinance of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by the recognition of the State of Colorado Safe Routes to School Grant in the amount of two hundred and eighty-four thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollars for East Seventy-Second Avenue Corridor Infrastructure Improvement Project and the authorization of the expenditure thereof. Title of ordinance two zero four nine, an ordinance amending Article Four of Chapter Twelve of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code by the addition of Section twelve dash six zero one two, regulating marijuana cultivation and processing in residential structures. Title of ordinance A N two three three dash one five, an ordinance approving and accomplishing the annexation of contiguous unincorporated territory described in Exhibit A attached heretofu made a part hereof located at one zero six five five East Hundred and Twentieth Court, Commerce City, Colorado. Title of ordinance Z nine one one dash one five, an ordinance rezoning the property described in Exhibit A attached heretofu made a part hereof located at one zero six five five East Hundred and Twentieth Court, pin number one seven two one zero two two zero six zero zero one and one seven two one zero two two zero six zero zero two, Commerce City, Colorado, and amending the zoning map of the City of Commerce City, Colorado to reflect said rezoning. Title of ordinance Z nine one five dash fifteen, an ordinance rezoning the property described in Exhibit A attached heretofu made a part hereof located at eighty-three fifty Rosemary Street, Commerce City, Colorado, and amending the zoning map of the City of Commerce City, Colorado to reflect said rezoning. Title of ordinance Z nine one eight dash one five, an ordinance rezoning the property described in Exhibit A attached heretofu made a part hereof located at fifty-three sixty Monocle Street, Commerce City, Colorado, and amending the zoning map of the City of Commerce City, Colorado to reflect said rezoning. That's your consent agenda.
Thank you. The titles have been read. We've had the motion, everything. Take a roll call vote. The results of the roll call vote are eight yes, one excused, and so it passes unanimously. Next on our agenda is a public hearing that is going to be continued. I need to take, make a motion to continue the public hearing to May fourth, two thousand fifteen. Mr. Amador?
Move to continue resolution twenty fifteen dash twenty-three?
To May fourth.
To May fourth, sorry.
Mr. Douglas? I have a motion and a second to continue and move the public hearing to May fourth, two thousand fifteen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Okay, that resolution will be continued on May fourth. Our next resolution is resolution two thousand fifteen dash seventeen. I invite Public Works Director Maria DeAndrea to come forward with the presentation.
Nineteen.
Nineteen.
Okay, it may be nineteen, but it says seventeen on my. Okay, it's nineteen.
Good evening, Mayor Protam and City Council members. Just a brief presentation to you tonight on this agreement. We have reached resolution with the City and County of Denver on the amendment to an existing Tower Road interchange contract that will allow us to move forward with the construction of the on-ramp from Tower Road to West Valley Boulevard. So just a little background here, the Federal Aviation Administration, or FAA, wants a criteria that all costs associated with non-airport traffic, so those traveling away from the airport, be covered by a non-international airport funding source. So that was the real issue that we were trying to resolve with this agreement. It's really coming to, to an understanding of who is going to pay what essentially for any of those new trips or added trips that were going away from the airport as a result of this on-ramp. So there are two elements to the maintenance costs associated with that. The first being variable annual maintenance, just your typical kind of potable hatching, that sort of thing. And then more major maintenance, which consists primarily of slab replacement. So all the paneling at Boulevard is paid in monthly, so you're replacing large amounts of those panels every year. The agreement that we've reached with City and County of Denver would have us paying approximately anywhere from twenty-three thousand to twenty-nine thousand for the next five years. Those are the variable maintenance costs. And there was a formula that was created between the two parties and based on the volume of traffic on the on-ramp, that's how the percentage is. The City and County of Denver will also pay a portion of the costs associated with non-airport traffic from, that are coming from Denver. The slab replacement costs are really unknown at this time, so although we are on the hook for those, we haven't calculated those specifically, as will only occur those costs if the actual project comes about in the next five years. The intent of this agreement is really that within the next five years, a larger agreement is being proposed somehow and will be arrived at between DIA and adjacent entities that would cover all of the non-airport traffic costs for the entire length between Boulevard. So as I mentioned previously, this agreement will allow us to report with designing construction of that on-ramp, and this is an amendment to the previous agreement as opposed to the SCAM rule. Just to clarify those funding and construction responsibilities. Our schedule at this time would be to, as we move forward, would be the City and County of Denver is also going to be acting on this agreement. Then we would move forward to procure a design firm in the next month, a month and a half. We do need to go through an environmental clearance process. Basically, NEPA or National Environmental Policy Act requires anything on federal property, requires us to go through that process. That would take several months. We would be able to begin designing them. We're anticipating final design sometime this fall and going out for bids probably before the end of the year, construction occurring next year. We're still trying to figure out how best to package that to get some economies of scale with the Tower Road whitey projects, both within Commerce City and the portion that we're designing within the City and County of Denver. So still trying to work on those details while I have an asterisk on a couple of those dates. Hopefully, we can sort of order those things. So with that said, we recommend a crucial resolution. Miss DeAndrea, any questions? Thank you.
Are there any questions from council, our Public Works Director?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Benson?
I remember seeing in this amendment document that it referred to a contract dated nineteen ninety-two. I don't know that I've ever seen that kind. I know that there was one dated nineteen ninety-five, which is the one that requires E four seventy to build it, but what is the one? I've never seen one dated nineteen ninety-two.
Can you answer it?
Yes, so the one, as I mentioned, we're amending the existing agreement. So there was an agreement dated nineteen ninety-two that between the City and County of Denver and Commerce City that allowed for that initial construction and actually talked about the other two ramps, going to and from the airport that were built at that time. We actually, the City, Commerce City, paid for those. So rather than creating an entirely new document, we actually just amended that existing one to, since it did cover the entire interchange. Not sure which nineteen ninety-five one, that may be something different.
Or maybe something with E four seventy. Our most recent passion with E four seventy was a new girl from E fourteen.
I think the nineteen ninety-five agreement that you referred to is the agreement involving E four seventy.
Who would have seen the E four seventy agreement?
E four seventy and the City of Commerce City.
There were more than two parties though, weren't there, Bob? You sure Denver wasn't a part of that? I mean, it's located in the City and County of Denver. The off-ramp itself is. That was the reimbursement agreement. I don't recall that Denver was a party to that. The reimbursement was so important.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Protam, we'd be happy to send both of those agreements out to refresh our memory and yours. But Ms. DeAndrea is correct. The simplest approach, as agreed to by Commerce City and Denver and DIA's attorneys, was to amend that original interchange agreement. We think we have the dates right, but we'd be happy to send that E four seventy agreement out just to refresh your memory and this original interchange agreement with the City and County of Denver.
That's mine. Obviously, we need to approve this three years ago.
Are there any other questions from the council? Mr. Teeter?
I really don't have a question, but I would like to thank Brian and the staff and council also up here for the work that has went into this thing. We've been trying to get this thing off the ground and get it moving forward since I've been on council, which has gone on four years now. And we've hit many roadblocks. We're finally getting these things resolved, and the people of Commerce City should be very thankful this thing is finally moving forward. And when it's completed in the twenty sixteen, they'll enjoy it. Thank you.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes, I want to say thank you as well to our staff for working really hard individually on this here, and also I give thanks to E four seventy for working with us as well. Thanks.
Mr. McAdonie? Okay, Ms. Amador?
Thank you. I also want to echo what everyone's saying. This is a long time coming for this council seated and previous councils and for the community that is watching. This is huge for economic development within Commerce City. And so on that note, I just want to thank everyone that has been involved in this and including the City and County of Denver for taking trips with us to Washington, DC and to advocate for this with the FAA and all parties involved.
Mr. Benson?
Hey, you know, it was two thousand ten that I got a copy of the ninety-five agreement and showed it to the people at E four seventy, and they were looking at it like, where did this come from? Unfortunately, it was signed by Steve Hogan, who at that time was the mayor of Aurora, just before he became mayor of Aurora, when he was the executive director of E four seventy back in nineteen ninety-five. So no one could hardly vote against that funding coming from E four seventy, except Thornton really tried hard to do that, but they had no grounds to vote against it. So we have the money, and it's provided by E four seventy, and that was the deal. And as Mr. Amador said, I want to congratulate our staff for getting this deal worked out because this is, I hate to say that twenty thousand is really pennies. I know this council spends hours and hours worrying about two or three hundred dollars, and here we are, we're voting for a hundred thousand, but it's well worth it to get this done by the middle of next year. And so I think it was a good deal that you all worked out. Thank you.
And going last, I'm going to say the same thing. I want to thank everybody that participated in getting this done because it has not been an easy process. But everybody, I would just be echoing what everybody else said, so I'm going to make my comments short and just thank everybody for everything that they did. Staff, Denver, FAA, E four seventy. Thank you to everybody because now we're actually going to get our ramp. Thank you again. Are there any other questions from anybody on the dais? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to adjust counsel on this resolution? Okay, I'm prepared for a motion to resolution. Mr. McAdonie?
Thank you, sir. I would move to approve resolution twenty fifteen dash nineteen.
Mr. Benson?
Second that motion.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution twenty fifteen dash nineteen. Any questions from council? Any discussion?
Is endzone celebration allowed in this case?
Yes, there is. All those in favor signify by saying Oh, the city, we were ready to celebrate already. With the city attorney, please read the title.
Resolution two thousand fifteen dash nineteen, resolution approving amendment to the Tower Road Interchange Contract with the City and County of Denver.
Okay, the title's been read. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Passes unanimously. Okay, now. Our next resolution is two thousand fifteen dash twenty-five. Is there anyone on council wished, any questions about this resolution? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to adjust counsel about this resolution? Can I get a motion to approve this resolution? Ms. Amador?
Move to approve resolution twenty fifteen dash twenty-five?
Ms. Elliott?
Second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Mr. City Attorney, would you please read the title?
Title reads, resolution finding substantial compliance of an annexation petition and setting a public hearing to determine if the proposed annexation complies with statutory requirements for such annexation A N dash two three four dash fifteen.
Okay, the title has been read. Take a voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? It passes unanimously. Our next order of business is administrative council Our next order of business is administrative council business. The first item on administrative council business is city manager's compensation. As a result of a successful evaluation, city manager McBroom, you are look, I'm, we're here to make a motion to approve a raise for the city manager's base salary by 3% retroactive to January 1st. Can I get a motion? Mr. Douglas?
Motion. So, move.
Mr. Teeter?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you for your job. Well done, Mr. City Manager. That's another round of applause. Okay. Mr. City Manager, you're going to the City Council before we move to dais?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. At the mayor's request, although he's not here tonight, he did ask me to canvass the rest of council about your availability for a follow-up special meeting next Monday that would include an executive session for the purpose of completing your annual performance evaluation process. He asked me to canvass you and check your availability to have a special meeting from 5:00 to 7:00 PM and then we would then conduct the study session beginning at 7:00 PM. But, rather than have us put those wheels in motion, he thought it would be a good idea for me to check with all of you and see if you could be here as early as 5:00 next Monday for a special meeting.
Is there anybody on the dais is going to have any problem with being here at 5:00 next Monday for the special meeting from 5:00 to 7:00? Okay, it looks like unanimously we'll be able to attend and we can post that special meeting.
A motion would be helpful to set that special meeting?
Can I? Ms. Elliott?
To approve the special meeting on Monday, April 13th?
13th.
To start at?
To start at 13.
Ms. Carson? Okay. A motion and a second, any discussion?
Sure.
Mr. Benson?
I would just ask that an invitation be sent out by Lisa so it goes on our calendar automatically.
Okay.
Mr. McAdonnie?
This is motion to do the adjustment to start down the study session, which is currently not even publicly noted.
I don't think it's required, but it wouldn't hurt.
Okay. Okay, with, do you want to amend your motion to the start time of 7:00 for the study session?
So, I move to amend my previous comments for the start time from 5:00 PM. As noted previously, the study session is, was, are previously scheduled at 6:00 PM, so this would be amended to 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM and then the study session to begin thereafter at 7:00 PM.
Okay, is the secondor okay with that? Say yes.
Say yes, Katie.
Okay, she said yes, but she only said it to me. Okay, so we have the motion and the second and the discussion. Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. It passes unanimously. Okay, is there any more administrative council business from the city manager or city attorney? Okay, Mr. Douglas?
Yes, I request from council, two council trial requests before everyone. The first one is Building One America National Summit. Two years ago, me and Andrew went out to the summit along with other folks from the county and around metropolitan area. And this year, once again, it's every two years, it's open for two council members. I was asked if anyone else would like to join me on this trip. I have reached out to the Denver Foundation, I am applying for a $5,000 community grant that I could also reach out to other civic leaders, whether the school board, state or the county, and ask for them to participate in trip as well. Those funds would be distributed out amongst the people who I would like to invite, so at least half my trip will be paid for as long as everyone else to. Some people who I have spoken to may not take, take part in the money, so I would reach out to other people in the community and get as many people as I can to go on this trip.
Is there anybody, this conference, last time Mr. Amador and Mr. Douglas went, Mr. Amador isn't going to be able to make it this time because of work obligations. Is there anyone on council that would like to take Mr. Amador's spot for this conference?
What dates are those?
Except for Mr. Benson?
What dates are those?
It's July 22nd to 25th.
July 22nd through the 25th.
You know, nobody else wants to, I'd like to.
Okay. Okay.
But I won't take a per diem.
Okay.
Doesn't anybody else want to do that?
I would love to do it, but during that same time, I'm going to have another conference, I think, the week before. That is a private conference that has nothing to do with the city and I just think it'd be too much traveling during the month of July. You know, we don't have to send two, we can send one, but if two want to go, I don't know if we, oh, no, we didn't budget for this conference because it's every other year, so that's why this is before you. And so, does anybody have any objections to Mr. Douglas going to this conference? Okay. Okay, Ms. Carson?
Just in a couple of minutes here, so if Mr. Douglas has put two requests in and Mr. Benson has said that he would also join, that's like $5,000 we're going to approve of travel and I, not that I'm against what One America stands for and what you're doing, I just am not sure that that is where I want to spend funds right now of the cities.
Well, Ms. Carson, I'm applying for a grant from the Denver Foundation worth $5,000. So, I've been receiving the grant money from, from Denver Foundation to help, to help with the cost.
So, your cost is going to be $6,500?
Oh, no. Oh, no, no.
Well, you're getting a grant for $5,000. Are, am I confused or are you asking us to approve 1499?
Yeah, I'm asking to approve 1499, but I'm asking, I'm also applying for a grant which could pay for over half of this trip.
I'm still confused. You're applying for a $5,000 grant?
I'm applying for a $5,000 grant, dollar grant from the Denver Foundation. And with the $5,000 grant, I can reach out to other leaders within our, our community in the county and in the state and ask for other people to participate as well. And I'm asking for those who attend that they would have to pay some portion of their trip, not the whole thing would be taken care of.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Okay.
You know, like I said, if nobody else wants to go, I'd like to go and I'm not going to take a per diem either, so mine would be about $300 less. And I would like to say something about per diems.
Okay.
No other, no other organization that I belong to when I go out of town gives me a per diem. It's like turn in what you actually spent. You spent $10 on a sandwich, turn that in, but you don't get a per diem. I did, I think the whole concept of per diems is just a ripoff.
Okay, Mr. Benson, that's not what we're discussing and per diem is an actual, it's under the federal government. The federal government actually states for different cities a per diem for going to those cities for conferences. It's not what you object to. If you object to it, don't do it, but don't object to it just because you don't do it for everybody's sake, okay?
The federal government is the biggest money wester of all time.
See, you're going off on another tangent. This is not what we're discussing.
This is the same tangent.
Okay.
I'm just saying it's a ripoff of the study.
Mr. Benson? I don't want to have to hit this.
Hit that.
Okay, okay. Okay, Mr. Benson ain't going. Okay, so we've just, he just counseled himself out with his per diem comment. No, I'm joking, audience, he did not. I, that was for the audience out there watching, especially my wife, I was just joking. Okay. We need to vote on this? Okay, okay, on building ones, American?
I have had a comment I'm trying to be in queue for for some time.
Oh, okay, Mr. McAdonnie?
Thank you. In conjunction with council member Carson's comments, I have two things. This, there were a series of local meetings that led up to the One, One America Conference and they were, they were productive, they seemed constructive. We got a great update from both Mr. Amador and Mr. Douglas two years ago when they participated. I haven't heard peep one in the interim about anything with this. And here we find ourselves ready to approve $1,400, potentially less should this grant go forward. I guess the concern I have here is that the fact that there's a grant potentially taking shape here which speaks to neighborhood development, to me, this seems like something that should have been a council dialogue about the merits of and the way that this program can be leveraged as opposed to an individual council member pursuing this. I would think that it would be a stronger, more, more productive outcome if this was something that the council was jointly supportive of, whether or not we send multiple members to this event. It just seems like this needs to be something that the council is aligned on. I'm still unclear in terms of what the likelihood of securing the grant is, how that grant might be used. I mean, I've just had the opportunity since sitting here and finding this on the dais to flip through this 10-plus page application. Clearly, there's a lot of thought that would need to go into crafting this grant proposal. Where, what is the status of this grant draft? And is that contingent, complete, is having this completed and submitted contingent on your being able to go? Or are these really two separate things? You can go to One America one way or the other and the grant is something that can or cannot happen should we choose to pursue it?
No, it's a, it's a grant that you, that I spoke to Paul Scully, he'll be here, out here in May. Yeah, the reason why it's, not every year, it's every other year. We go there and based on presentations and all and discussions, you know, we just had two, two school bonds that failed. One failed by 1,000 votes, one fell by 100. And that's just part of discussion. We talked about communities, looking at other avenues to support when, when, when bonds don't, when bonds do not pass. So, it's all about, also about community too. It's bringing people together. It's, it's, this is not a fun trip, I tell you. When you go out to, to Washington, July is hot.
No, no, I, I.
Okay, so, so when it comes to the grant, is, this is a grant that's, that will happen. My thing is I have to go out and get other civic leaders in order to do this. This is a joint effort. But, this was put on before and there was a grant, I'm staying ahead of the grant this time. There was a grant that was offered, they had submitted, the Denver Foundation did give $5,000 to Building One America and Building One America did, did submit that out to other recipients as well. I am asking for your approval on this. It's not contingent on, on the grant. This grant will be filled out and approved. I just wanted to get my travel, Chris, accepted.
I'm just trying to, thank you, I'm just trying to distinguish what it is that's before us because I think what I hear is, step one, we have an interest in attending this One America Conference and you're seeking council's approval to cover the funding for that trip, period. Second, you are interested in pursuing a One America or a strengthening neighborhoods grant from the Denver Foundation. That is a separate effort for all intents and purposes. What is the due date for the grant submission?
I submit the grant in April and it gets approved in May.
You have submitted or you will submit?
I will submit the grant in April.
And is that grant that you're submitting, being submitted on behalf of Steve Douglas? Or is it be, being submitted on behalf of council member Steve Douglas and the Commerce City Council?
It's, it's on behalf of councilman Steve Douglas. This, this grant could be for anyone in the community, it just has, doesn't have to be a, a local leader.
Okay, I, I, I think I would like to separate this discussion and ensure that if, if Commerce City is, has a role or if there's a thought of having a role, that that be something that we talk about as a council. I guess my other question is, what's been happening with the One America effort since the last trip to DC? Have there been, has there been correspondence?
Yes, at the, at the NLC, there's a first tier, first tier sessions, the cities who are with. Now, I am not a member of the Building One America, we, you know, as far as building, building one Colorado, there is no organization. I'm only on there as a council member.
So, you're not actively participating in the local Building One Colorado effort?
No, we don't have, we don't, we have not yet formed one yet. There's like Building One Pennsylvania, Building One Oregon, Ohio. It'd be nice to have one here and we're working on those efforts, but this is, this is an open invitation to local leaders as far as helping you in your community when things don't, when things aren't, cannot come together as one, you reach out. I mean, it's the same thing as when we go to Washington and we advocate, well, this right here, we get local leaders together. There's also people from the White House and Congress there. It's a bipartisan discussion.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions? Ms. Amador?
I would just like to add to the Building One America, the conference is not an easy conference or a fun conference. This is one where you sit with elected officials, you sit with community members who have transitioned and formed together to pull the community together for suburban communities. And so, county commissioners do attend, suburban school districts do attend and it's really, the intent is to pull everyone together within where Steve is coming from, Colorado and suburban areas to get our resources together and get federal funding for suburban areas, is really what it is. And so, when we did come back from the conference two years ago, we did have some community outreach with different organizations. It was Adams County, it was Mapleton School District, it was, there was a whole bunch of different leaders within the community to try to advocate and pull this together, again, get this off the ground for suburban areas within Colorado. So, I will be supporting this, just as a little bit of background.
Any other comments? Okay, I'm going to comment, at NLC, they have a first tier suburbs committee and the One America Conference people meet with them and they throw around ideals and a lot of the school districts come from this and they, they spitball ideals on how to pass bond issues, how, how to keep their schools quiet and comfortable where they don't have any gang violence. Part of our mental health initiative to recognize different mental health issues in communities and schools and everything. So, this One America Conference has a bunch of different roundtable discussions and that deal with a lot of different subjects. What's really, it's short on this, it gives you a little brief overview. It says, "Promoting a greater understanding and appreciation for the strengths and challenges of our diverse middle-class community." of our diverse middle-class community. The Building One America Summit on Suburbs and Diverse Middle-Class Communities, you know, and, but it doesn't go into detail of how it helps with that, with, uh, the different little focus groups that communities leave, I mean, people leave there from different communities and go back and have an ideal on how to get different things done. Uh, and, um, and what they do is during the year that they're off, they do feedback to see what has worked and what hasn't worked. So when the next conference comes up, they actually have, uh, ideals, okay, this is, I wish that we had more people that were interested in going on this council to different groups like this, because I truly believe that our council, for those that are going to be on it and keep continuing, and those that are running for election, this is a benefit, you know, and we are taking advantage of all the benefits that we have out there that they're given to you. I mean, we're giving you free education that normally would cost a lot of people a whole semester in college. We're going to give this to you by academia from around the country on what works and what doesn't, but it seems to me that we, as a council, let a lot of things just lay on the table and we pass it out. So, okay, go ahead.
If I may, I, I didn't ask for you to defend our sending people to conferences, that's not the point of my comments. I had specific comments for Mr. Douglas around this specific conference and what has come out of that since our last sending two members to that, of, to a, of, of a delegation from Commerce City to this conference. I'm trying to understand what outcomes have occurred since the visit two years ago, what is it we intend to build upon heading into this attendance of the conference? And I'm not saying in any of my comments that this doesn't sound like an intriguing, uh, opportunity, but opportunities are made by how much you get out of them. So you can go and you can come back and you can say, I was there, or you can go and be highly engaged and build a plan and, and, and a set of actions that come out of that and, and exponentially increase the benefit or the impact of that attendance and participation. I'm trying to understand, what did we gain from our investment of last visit and how are we building on that with what's going forward? And I've yet to hear anything more than what's on the paper, and that's what's concerning to me. If this is about building dialogue and partnerships and constructive and collaborative, uh, dialogue, then who else from our community in terms of other stakeholders are going, um, so that we have some sense of who those other, uh, who else can be learning and coming back and building on it, right? I mean, I would, I would expect to hear that, you know, there's at least one example of something we did coming out of this that we're building on and we hope to further. That hasn't been, uh, been made clear, and so with all due respect, Mr. Mayor Protem, that was the question for, for Mr. Douglas.
See, and that's what I was trying to explain why it's every other year. But, but see, if the first-tier suburbs, this is part of this conference, and it does explain that during that off-year, what isn't working and what does work is what goes back to the next conference.
I, I get that. The question is still to Mr. Douglas to speak to.
Yes, thank you, and I, I did answer that. I told you when I, when we went out to, out to Washington, every year we go out there to lobby and there's, um, NLC, uh, conference. And at the conference, it's a first-tier city, and we are a first-tier city to Denver, and then there's also small communities. So, I mean, there's, there's a lot, a lot of dialogue that, that happens and, um, you know, it's also, has strengthened me as, as a council member. I'm really, um, into the community and I go on and I, I, I actually meet with a lot of people throughout the city. I, I'm on the Facility Review Board for, um, Adams 14, I've been attending those meetings, and I'm trying to help other folks out there, um, that do have the time, but they don't have the resources. And this is a great opportunity for me to reach out to them and, and, and invite them, which I would like to for Adams 14. I did, I did ask them and they're going to put a, a team together. Um, there's a, I, I think one or two commissioners are going to go from Adams County. I'm looking at, uh, Jefferson County, Rappahoe County, there's a lot of participants in the state of Colorado that could go out and, and, and learn from this. And this is something that strengthens, uh, my ability, um, so when I, there's people out there that need help, I know how to help them. Um, I mean, I, I, I tell you right now, um, you know, having the time and opportunity and, and by going to these things here, it takes my time. This is not go out there and have fun. This is, this is to learn and, and, you know, my time on council, since you're challenged, every time I want to do something, I'd be challenged here. I have not once been on a trip with you, um, sir. So, you know, for participation, uh, it would be nice, uh, if you could participate in some of the activities around here as well, um, but, you know, I.
I, I'm not here to, to throw back and forth, and I've attended plenty of events and unfortunately some of those precede your time on council, so my questions were valid. I've yet to hear great examples, but I appreciate the feedback from all and I will, uh, make my decision once the vote is, is time to be cast.
Ms. Carson?
Um, I just have a few questions and, and a couple of things to say. Uh, one is that we do have a, a budget for travel and we also have a discretionary fund. It's very important to me that we stay within those means. Um, it's actually important to me that just because it's there doesn't mean that you use it all. Uh, but Mr. McAdonny was trying to ask some questions that I don't think they were actually, I was getting an answer to the questions that I have. Um, it's not that I don't think Building One America is a great idea. I, I commend that. Uh, but what I'm looking at is us here, and I don't know what has happened in the last two years that, where Colorado is in this, where, since the last two years, what gains have happened? Um, have you all been meeting once a month, twice a month? Um, what's, what's the plan, I guess? Colorado needs to have a plan. As you said to me, there's some cities, some states that already have.
Right.
Build One Oregon or whatever.
Right.
I don't know what you said. Um, we all know Colorado is very unique in its educational piece. Uh, Tabor, Gallagher, all of it makes us very, very unique. Um, so I'm just not sure that even though I think this is a great program, where I see how it will truly benefit us, um, because I think there needs to be a better plan for us. With this five thousand dollar scholarship, in this fifteen hundred, I would love to see money like that spent within our community to try to bring our community together so they can understand what the problems in our funding to the educational system is. Um, so, Mr. Douglas, I know that you think I give you trouble every time you want to travel. Um, it's not that. It's what I said, that just because we have money doesn't mean we should spend it, and I think we should spend it very wisely. I just happen to have the difference of opinion than what you do of where that money should be spent. So at this time, no, I will not be supporting this, and I'm sorry.
It's all right, I appreciate that.
Ms. Amador?
Do we have a motion on the floor? I can't.
No, we have never got to a motion.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion if possible, if there's no more discussion.
Oh, I have.
I had one more question and I think, uh.
I have remarks.
Okay. Uh, before you get to your motion, I have Ms. Elliott.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I guess my only concern is the way, um, not that I'm against the travel or any of the conferences that you attend, um, Councilmember Douglas, but it, I guess it was the approach that this would be available for another member of council to attend, and I guess what I have a problem with is the fact that, well, if nobody's interested, I guess so-and-so should go. I think we should be very deliberate. That's, thank you. Um, it's not a matter of just sending someone else along because the money is there or the money will potentially be there. Um, I think this is a, a good conference, there's a lot of information, I, I don't have anything against that, I just have a, a problem with the way that it was, uh, presented, and it, it, it made it sound like no one wants to go and we'll just go ahead and send someone just to have another warm body. I just have a problem with that.
Oh, thank you for your comment, Ms. Crystal. Um, no, it wasn't that. I, 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 I had asked, um, Mr. Amador if he wanted to, to attend and get a share, he said he, he couldn't. Um, I was only asking for myself to go and I thought, you know, if anyone was, else was interested into it and going, that, that offer's there. Now, this, uh, this committee that I'm forming, um, it's, it does deal with our problems within our community. We, we are diverse community, we have different needs in our city, and, um, and this is a way to bring people together. And this conference puts them in front of other people, not just us, because right now, we can't figure that out, which has been a problem. That's why I would like these people, uh, the folks in our community who are leaders, people who look up to, to attend this meeting and to get to learn from this. It's, it's not, it's not what you think, it's, it's, it truly, it's an eye-opener and gets them to think outside the box. Now, there's Department of Transportation, EPA and HUD, uh, they have a, a, a grant. Um, but it, the grant goes out to the community, um, not to the city, but goes out to, out to the community with the need. And, um, you know, as we know, uh, in this part of the city, Adams 14 has a great need. Adams 27J has a need as well. Um, and I'm going to reach out to 27J and, and see if, um, someone from the school board, um, could attend this as well. So, um, there are a lot of people that I want to include in this. Um, so that's why I had, I was offered a way to pay for this and get people involved, just like I did last time, but stay ahead of the curve and I get, and I get to choose leaders to go out and participate in this. So, um, that's the difference from what it was two years ago. And then it's, it gives you an opportunity in between those years when we have these meetings in Washington to get with the other folks that deal with, um, that are in Build One America, that attend National League of City Conference. So, um, it's good dialogue, um, you know, and in between now and then, there's going to be several meetings. Uh, the gentleman Paul Scully's coming out here in May, uh, May 8th and 9th, uh, to discuss, um, and, uh, he's going to be pulling, uh, folks from, um, Jefferson County, Rappahoe County, Boulder County, uh, so it's just not Commerce City, it's, it's, uh, we're trying to work with the region here. And, uh, I would love for, uh, Colorado to be, uh, Build One Colorado and, um, be part of the organization. And then that takes, um, that takes joint effort from all over the place, not just here in our community, but within it, within, uh, Rocky Mountain Region.
Mayor, can I add to that? I just wanted to clarify, it's not that I discredit any, any of that, I've been to several, um, conferences with you and, and workshops, and, and I know that you're passionate about it, and it's, it's not even, not so much that. I think it was just the way it went down the list of who wants to go, who's able to go, oh, I guess we'll just go ahead and send Councilmember Benson. That's, that's where I had a problem, because I know the audience, we have, uh, you know, the residents that are watching on TV saying, well, if they just want to send two people, then they just, you know, might as well just throw a name in the hat and just pick a person to attend. That's, that's what I, I, it's just the image, it's, it's the fact that, is it really necessary? Um, you've brought back a lot of information from two years ago and Councilmember Amador, so I'm, I'm not discrediting that at all, it was just the way that it was handled up here. That's, that's just what I wanted to clarify. Thank you.
And, and I agree, I didn't, um, I, like I said, I was only presenting this for myself. Um, I knew Councilman, um, Councilman Amador could not attend, um, so this request was just for me, it wasn't for anyone else that was put out there. I didn't, I didn't put that out there, but I just, um, sorry to kind of went the wrong way, that's not what the intent was.
Any other questions? Mr. Am, uh, Mr. McAdonny?
Yeah, I think just to add to Councilmember Elliott's comments, I think, again, every comment we've made tonight has been internalized as a personal attack, and, and these are not, none of these comments were intended to be that. It is a discovery question. I'm asking on behalf of our constituents to understand how we're spending our time and our money. This is not about debating, spending a, a few hundred dollars here or there on a conference, that, that's not it. It is, it is understanding and making sure, I mean, here, here on one hand, you're talking about collaboration with all of these various stakeholder communities. It's, it's about, it starts here, and if the nine of us aren't communicating and collaborating, then I have a really, really hard time getting behind, sending somebody off to go and collaborate with people all over America, right? It, it's, it starts here, and if we don't have an understanding of the goals and objectives that are in Steve's brain, right, then how can we support Steve? And I want to make sure that we are. So it's not to say that the things that you're thinking about aren't great and that the, the partnerships that you want to create aren't great, it's just that we're not hearing about them. So if there's, if there's an effort afoot or things that you're trying to do and this is a tool to help do more, fantastic, but, but that's not yet come across, and I think that's the challenge. I, I also have a question in terms of the, the grant, I don't find in the grant material, and it would have been nice to have this before tonight so that I, all of us could have read it. When is the grant due? The grant application due?
It's, um, due the first part of May.
So it's due the first part of May and we're into the month of April? And what is it exactly that you anticipate asking for? What is the project or the, the, the effort that you're?
This, uh, grant from Denver Foundation is for the Build One Summit, it's not for anything else.
So you're, okay, so you're, you're, you're applying to the Strengthening Neighborhoods Grant Program, asking for up to five thousand dollars to fund bringing you and others to the One America Summit? Okay. And I had heard at some point, and again, I'm just, this is how the information's coming out, so understand that I'm just trying to piece it together. The, it sounded like we were going to the, to this conference to get tools and ideas on how to go and ask for a grant, we're actually trying to use the grant to get people to go to the conference.
No, that's not.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Amador?
I think I can simplify this. So I'd like to make a motion to, uh, approve Councilman Steve Douglas to attend the Build One America, uh, in Washington DC, July 22nd through the 25th, with the condition that, um, he does, uh, receive the grant to attend the conference that he is going to apply for. That's the motion.
Okay. Everybody understand the motion? Okay.
Second?
Okay, I have a motion and a second to send Mr. Steve Douglas to the conference on the ability of him to be able to receive the grant. And, okay, any discussion? Any more discussion? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, I have one no vote, so it isn't unanimously passed, but it is passed. Now, Mr. Douglas, you realize that the, this going to the conference is contingent on you receiving the grants?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And, uh, I have one more, uh, request, and that's the National League of Cities Leadership Summit. Um, this is, uh, also is, um, an opportunity for me to, um, strengthen my, my, my leadership skills. Um, it's a two-and-a-half-day, um, all-day conference. I attended this meeting, um, the first time with Councilman Benson and Councilman, I mean, uh, Mayor Protem Bullock. Um, last year it was, uh, the, um, conferences, uh, same thing, uh, Leadership Summit, and with this one also, I'm applying for a scholarship, um, that could also help pay for my, uh, travels. It's a little different, this is an application for a scholarship, not a grant.
Any discussion on this one? This is pretty self-explanatory. Does anyone have any, uh, questions? Mr. McAdonny?
I don't know if it's missing in the packet, we obviously have the, the two pages on the scholarship application, but there's nothing about the subject matter for the summit this year?
I passed that out two or three times up here today, it's.
I'm just saying, I, I understand that, but having it in, in front of me right now while I'm being asked to make a decision to authorize seventeen hundred dollars would be helpful, and, and I'm sure I have the piece of paper sitting in my, uh, in my pile at home. So can somebody just summarize what the focus of the summit is this year for the benefit of the citizens watching tonight?
Okay, uh.
Yeah, can, can Mr. Douglas speak to the conference?
Yeah, this is, um, this is, this is, uh, a summit that, uh, will help me with my, uh, like I said, with my leadership skills.
I'm just asking for the subject matter of the conference. What is this year's focus?
The subject matter. The subject matter is, is, is strengthening you to be a, a, a better leader in your community. And there's, uh, there's sessions that are there, uh, topics, discussions. It's pretty much, um, the day in and out of, uh, a community, what goes in any other city.
Mr. Amador?
Um, I think if you look on the scholarship application, one, two, three, paragraph four, uh, "The Leadership Summit is a personal leadership retreat designed to enhance success and understanding of leadership roles and responsibilities as a municipal official." So I think that is the intent and the subject matter that you're looking for.
Okay. Just a minute. Okay, uh, the, uh, the, uh, it's leading through tough times. It's a highlight of the, uh, Leadership Summit this year. That's going to be down in Orlando, Florida, uh, from 9/16 to 9/20. And it's, uh, helps city officials diffi-, uh, weigh the waters of difficult times in their cities, states and everything else. That is, um, um, basically the premise of the conference. There will be about five to seven speakers, uh, that will speak throughout the whole two-day conference. And basically we'll break out into focus groups on leading through tough times in your city, through economics, school, whatever tough times your city is going through. Um, I will bring another pamphlet next week and pass out it, uh, study session if anyone needs it again. Uh, Ms. Elliott?
Thank you, Mayor Pro temp. I guess my concern is, I think something like this or these two requests should probably be brought forth to council at a study session and then at a regular council meeting. Then, once we've had the discussion, then we can vote on these. Um, because I know, I mean, we've been up here now for the last half hour or so debating and, and, and not that I don't see that these conferences as educational or deliberate. Uh, I, I know these are very beneficial, but I think we're put up in a position where we're arguing against each other and we don't have enough information to, to really make a sound decision. And so that's, that's my only request is, is, you know, not only one, but we're looking at two conferences. And also this one is pending, um, applying for a scholarship. And so I, I feel like we're kind of, I'll say myself, uh, not to, to exclude my colleagues here, but I feel that I, I'm, I'm kind of making a vague vote on something that I don't know is definite. Um, I know that these are beneficial and this isn't against you, Councilmember Douglas. I know that you are very interested in, in obtaining any type of, uh, information, education, uh, reiteration, whatever. All these skills that you've applied for your term on council, um, that's, that's not even in the equation. It's just a matter of having a little more information. We're debating against each other. Uh, I think we could've avoided a lot of this if, had we had this maybe, you know, at a study session where we had some discussion and then come here to the floor and be able to vote. Thank you.
Uh, my comment on this is, if he gets a scholarship, he doesn't use any city money. If he doesn't get the scholarship, the city money is what comes into effect to go to the conference. Yeah, but that's just it, you know? But his whole thing is he wants to go to the conference whether or no. What he's willing to do is apply for a scholarship to pay for it instead of asking us. But you can't, you have to apply for the, it's just like college. You have to apply for the school you want to go to in order to, you know, you just can't put out for a lot of scholarships and they say, what school are you going to? And you say, well, it depends if I get any money, you know? Um, you have to put the cart before the horse, first of all, in order to apply for the scholarship, to go to the conference. But you can backfill it. If he got the scholarship, none of this would be even in effect, the money. Or if he only got partial scholarship, what it covers, he wouldn't have to pay, uh, if it only covered registration, it would knock out the registration cost. Um, I'll leave the comments at that. Okay, Mr. Douglas?
Uh, yes. Um, you know, for this, this NLC Summit, there's a scholarship that's offered. It's not a guarantee. There's other participants who are gonna submit, uh, scholarships as well. I just put that in there because I will be applying for a scholarship. Um, and if I do get the scholarship, they'll apply to those, they'll apply to those funds. So all this is requests. There's no different than if it was last year. Um, you know, if, if that's gonna be the practice from now on, that we have a study session for councilmembers who want to go, um, you know, I, I guess if I have to jump in those hoops, then I, then I, then I do. It's just a simple request. Um, I'm not asking for anything else. Um, this is what's in front of you, uh, what's been proposed, uh, is a simple request with, with, um, um, the intent of hopefully receiving a scholarship, but it's not a guarantee. The other, um, travel request is a grant, which I am not asking to pay for the whole thing because I'm trying to get as many community leaders to go, um.
Oh, Mr. Douglas, that's already been taken care of. So don't even go back over that one. Mr. Amador?
If there's no more discussion, I think I would like to make a motion.
Is any more discussion from the dais? Okay, Mr. Amador?
I'd like to handle it the same way that we did before. So I'd make a motion to approve Councilman Douglas to attend the 2015 NLC Leadership Summit with the condition that he is successful, uh, in receiving a scholarship with the application in front of us.
Mr. Benson?
Second?
I have a motion and a second. Uh, any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Okay, I have, uh, two nays and so it passes. Okay. Any more administrative council business from the dais? Reports. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor Pro temp Bullock. Uh, very quickly, we did send out a city manager report via email prior to tonight's meeting. Uh, just wanted to highlight, uh, there's several updates. It's a shorter update than normal. Uh, two that are worth noting, uh, specifically tonight. One is to, uh, let council members know that the restaurant proposed in the reunion marketplace, referred to as Native Grill and Wings, they've notified us that their project is on hold indefinitely. Uh, the city has done all that we can to encourage that restaurant to locate in our community for their own reasons. Uh, they've put it on hold. We'll certainly keep you posted, uh, if their status changes. Uh, the other update I wanted to provide is a notification of a youth art contest to help promote recycling within our community, uh, to promote recycling around Earth Day and to engage the city's youth in the Be a Can Fan campaign. The City of Commerce City invites all youth residents in the fourth through eighth grades to submit an original art piece that reflects the importance of recycling. The winning piece will be incorporated into the design of the new solar-powered receptacles going in to Pioneer Park, uh, and the Commerce City Recreation Center this summer. The deadline to submit is April 17th, which is not, uh, too far away. Uh, you can read the complete contest guidelines and download an entry form City council members have been asked to judge art pieces, so you may not submit a piece of art yourself. I don't think any of you are in the fourth through the eighth grades anyway. Uh, city council will be, uh, judging art pieces before their meeting on May 4th, with winners unveiled on May 18th with a brief celebration before the council meeting. So I wanted to get that information out and encourage as many, uh, entrants as possible. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney?
Nothing further, Mr. Mayor Pro temp.
Is there anyone up on the dais? Uh, I don't have a mayor's report or a mayor pro temp report because I, we've done a lot of things in the last two or three weeks that since we've been, um, had a couple of study sessions and a holiday. Is anyone up here have a report of anything they would like to report that? Mr. Ben, uh, uh, Mr. Douglas, Mr. Ben, and then Mr. Benson?
Uh, thank you for the city manager, uh, update. Um, I see that, uh, beginning of April 6th, there's gonna be some hour changes and, and, uh, additional hours on Sundays for the, um, the rec center game room, uh, game room facility. I appreciate that. Um, Sundays from 8:30 to 5, which before was not open. And the Mondays, 8:30 to, 8:30 AM to 8:30 PM. Tuesdays and Fridays, 8:30 AM to 4:30, and then Saturday, 8:30 to noon. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Benson?
Wasn't our meeting with the school district and the Brighton City Council last week?
Yes.
Last Tuesday?
Yes, but in that meantime, in turn, we also met with the Denver City Council and had, uh, lunch.
That was the week before.
Yeah, but we've been off. Remember, we had a holiday in there?
Okay, so we had, but anyway, I just, I just wanted to talk about our meeting with the 27J in Brighton. Um, the presentation, which I thought was very good, was on Tabor and the ratcheting effect on, um, what it's going to do to, um, education and also transportation funding. Uh, and it's like the more that the economy, the ratcheting effect is a difficult concept, but this was about the best explanation of that that I've heard. Um, it's really terrible. The more the economy, um, increases, the more money that's generated, the more money that has to be returned to the taxpayers. And it's not going into education. And we're way behind in education. It's not going into transportation. We got a billion and a half dollars behind in transportation unless something is done about Tabor. I don't, I don't know where we're going. I, I think that we're unique in the United States to have a constitutional provision such as, uh, Tabor because it just prevents any growth at all. You're gonna be sending back a check for maybe a hundred dollars to everybody in the state.
Ten dollars.
Ten dollars? Ten dollars? It's not gonna do anybody really much good at all. Maybe they can go to see a movie or something. But with all the money that we need for education and transportation, it's just, uh, ridiculous. And I know it was brought up, uh, who was the, uh, the plaintiff in the Hickam-Luber case? Who was the? Anybody recall?
No.
Who's the plaintiff anyway? There's a lawsuit pending and I guess right now it's being considered by the Supreme Court. Uh, it's against the, the governor by several people that claim that, uh, Tabor is unconstitutional. I sure hope that that, uh, I guess right now it's just being decided on a procedural issue and the Supreme Court is probably not gonna consider it and it's gonna go back down to the, uh, US District Court. Is that right, Bob? It, it, this was a federal court case. It wasn't some, Colorado Supreme Court going to the US Supreme Court. It's, it's federal district court.
It's strictly a federal court case based upon the US Constitution.
Right. Okay. And let's just all hope that that case is, uh, successful and that Tabor is, uh,
Overruled.
I guess put in the place that it belongs and that's the trash can. Uh, anyway, that was a pretty significant meeting, I thought. It just showed where, where we're headed. And this lady brought up, uh, how it gets even worse, the better the economy is and the more the growth that occurs. All that money is just going back in a ten-dollar check to five and a half million people in the state. That's all I have.
Okay.
Mr. Benson?
We're 49th out of 50 states.
Yeah.
Oh, you have it?
Can I, I, I have some of this tattooed in my brain, unfortunately. Um, just, just to piggyback on Mr. Benson's comments, um, I think a couple of key highlights specific to the education piece. In the late seventies, early eighties, Colorado was outspending on average, uh, the rest of the nation in education spending per student of around $400, almost $450. Today, we spend $2,000 less per, uh, on average relative to the rest of the United States. That is abysmal. Um, you add to that the fact that we have a constitutional mandate to support, uh, funding of K-12 education at a given level. And we have been underfunding that, uh, to the tune of, in the District 27J alone, uh, north of $66 million since the negative factor went into place. I don't have the numbers memorized for 14 or other districts, but you can get a quick sense of what those numbers mean. Um, uh, some quick math that somebody, uh, put in my head. If you take that $2,000 per student and the fact that we're cramming upwards of 30 to 32 kids per classroom right now, you're talking about $60,000. $60,000 per classroom that's not there. So let's think about what we can do with $60,000. The, the fact that we don't have books, like my daughter checks out books and, and I'm actually taping books back together to make sure they go back to the library in better shape than they came home. That's the world we're dealing with right now. Um, I've talked to a number of folks following this meeting that we had with, uh, the Colorado Fiscal Institute presenting. Um, there is a massive, massive gap in understanding of our community. And, and what, like, common sense just doesn't allow what's happening today to, to happen, right? So by and large, everybody I talk to, um, pretty good common sense. And they say, well, we should be taking care of our kids. And then they, the problem is, nobody really understands what's happening with Tabor and Gallagher and all of these things that we have, um, somehow had pass. Um, at the end of the day, we, we also have a significant portion of our population that was not here when Tabor came to be, or when each of these subsequent efforts came to be. So here are people coming from other states where education is paramount, right? It's a no-brainer that you put money into teaching kids and we don't do that. And so there's this huge sort of shock where they realize that we're not doing the right thing. So I, I, I won't go any further than that. I would encourage anybody listening to go to ColoradoFiscal, F-I-S-C-A-L.org. Massive, uh, repository of resources. Please take full advantage. Um, lots and lots of good information to help get you, uh, savvier as a taxpayer and a citizen and a parent and a, a community member. Thanks, Jim, for bringing that up.
Okay, and piggybacking on that, um, we were down at the House and Senate down, uh, we went down with our youth group and there were four of us, uh, council people that went. And we talked to both our Senate representative and our representative, uh, Marino. And basically each house is going to have $5 million to deal with all the funding that they need to do this year. And they're gonna refund over $40 million back to the public from Tabor. And this is money that could go into transportation, just like they said, schools, all different. Uh, and when it is, it is explained to you in detail, it, it makes you wanna just sit up there and say, why can't the people figure out that in good times, the better the times get in Colorado, the more money we're going to refund back to the people and it's not gonna go to one project you need. And when the roads break down and your kids are going to school, not only split stations but tri-sessions, and you're asking why, you can look back to 1992 and Tabor and how it was brought into effect. And there's a couple of other things, Amendment 23 and other things that helped it along. But as a state, we aren't doing anything to help ourselves along. We're moving backwards compared to the rest of the country. And Tabor's the number one thing that's putting us in reverse. Okay? And, um, I'm, Ms. Carson can, uh, follow up now.
Um, I'll be brief. I just wanted to touch on a few things Mr. McAdonny said. Um, the $60,000, it, I talk to people every day and this vision of... Um, the $60,000, it, I talk to people every day and this vision of the elementary classroom and what do you need that money for? Elementary is fairly cheap to teach. Uh, it's just the facts. As these kids move, it requires a lot of money. So, think of high schools. Think of the amount of money, what it would take to really educate each high schooler with the technology, with all the resources that they should have. Um, when you go out and you look at private educations, it's very costly to send a child to a private high school. And there's a reason for that because high school is, is very costly. So, you, I, I just think people need to think differently of when they think of cost. The money that comes into the school district utilizes that money and puts it in the schools where the need is. And our kids are not going to be able to succeed i- if we cannot have the resources to provide them the education. And, and I will say, probably the majority of citizens living in Commerce City cannot afford these, these private high schools. Uh, what they can't afford is public education. So, it's just some clarifications.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes, uh, um, we are, we have a challenge here in Commerce City. We have two, two school districts. One's, one school needs to, needs to replace schools and the other one has been impacted because of our, our, our pricing of our homes, um, has driven a lot of people into our area. Um, no more do, can you say two and a half kids per house? It's more like three, four. Uh, and then the challenge there that when the bonds aren't passed, um, those kids still have to go to school. So, eh, so then you're hit with the fees. So, we really need to educate the public and let, let them understand what's at stake here, um, for everyone because when you invest in schools, you're investing into your, into your community.
Thank you. Uh, seeing no other reports, I'm going to ask for a motion to enter into executive session. The motion maker can read the language off the agenda and you can read both of the executive sessions at the same time. We'll vote on them separately. Mr. Benson?
Yes, move to adjourn to an executive session pursuant to CRS 24-6-402- subsection 4E, um, for the purposes described therein.
Okay. You, you need to tell what the purposes are for the executive session.
Well, there are two purposes. Uh, for the purpose of, uh, developing strategy for negotiations concerning economic development incentives in Commerce City and for the purpose of instructing negotiators regarding a potential real estate transaction.
Okay. Uh, do I have a, Mr. McAdonny? I have a motion and a second. Voting on number one, 15-8. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Voting on 15-29. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
There's, all those opposed, same sign. Okay. Uh, we will be in executive session for approximately, until we get back and then we will adjourn the meeting. At the same time, we will vote on them separately.
Yes, move to adjourn to an executive session pursuant...